Good evening. My name is Matt Lawless. I'm services Scottsville Town Administrator. You're now viewing the town of Scottsville meeting stream and reporting for the planning commission meeting held on Monday, April 4th, 2022. This meeting is held in compliance with Virginia Freedom of Information Act and open meeting laws. The town's ordinance on the continuity of government during the COVID-19 emergency has expired. That means that the stream and reporting will still be available to the public, but the voting members of the commission body are required to be here physically present. So that is the case and we have our quorum. This meeting includes a public comment period and public hearing. Everyone is welcome to attend and participate in those both physically and online. If you're viewing this meeting in the future on the town's YouTube channel, thank you very much. The local time here now is 7:03 PM and the meeting will come to order here momentarily. Thank you so much.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:03 PM. We have a quorum. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda? Can we agree to an agenda?
Could I trouble you to specify the public hearing on 5B? We advertised that public hearing appropriately, but the agenda doesn't show that as part of it.
Okay, so we don't have anybody here. How did we do that? How did we publicize that? Okay, which newspaper?
Our Daily Progress.
Okay, amendment noted. That's the public hearing for 5B. Are we expecting to have anyone reporting on this from outside or anyone planning to speak on any of these matters from outside?
We have our 5A Tiger Fuels engineers with us online. She can talk more about the James River Road project.
Okay, well, that's, that's great. I think 5A is a good place for that. It's that pretty fast. All right. Any other changes to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as the notations noted? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, minutes. Mark 7 minutes. Do you have a motion on the minutes?
I'm rushing to approve the minutes on the Monday, March 7th, 2022, planning commission meeting.
I'll second. All in favor? Okay, movement approved. Since Commissioner Briscoe's not here. Would our mailings?
I'm taking his place. You know, Dan works for a tour company and he had two tours in Charlottesville today that came into town and he promised one of them he'd meet him for dinner tonight. So really the big news is I was going to come anyhow because obviously the news from the last council meeting was that we approved the Bird Street project and I was going to come just to thank all of you for all your hard work. Way out there and got us all the information we needed and although it was a split vote, the information was there and it was good and verifiable information. So I just thank you all for all you did so that we can now get a new community in town. I don't know if any of you get the email from the museum, but there was an article that Evelyn Vincent sent out on when Paulette Town was built in 1944. So it's been a while since we had a new community in town. And again, thank you very much. That was a highlight of what's to report from last week.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, and on that note, I also want to thank each and every one of you because we worked very hard. We put a lot of hours into that. We did a lot of research. We asked a lot of questions. We talked to a lot of people. I think we should all be proud of the work that we did. Thank you.
I kind of came in the middle of it, so I feel like I'm just riding your wave.
Well, and that's true. Even when you were here, you were there with us. Absolutely. Is there anything else from the town council that... So Glenn is on hold.
Town budget is underway now, so we're working on that recommendation. There is a modest planning and support line for planning commission. I kept that about the same as last year, but if there are trainings that you need to be attending or consultant help that you expect to need, it's a good time to express that to town council and make sure that that's budgeted appropriately. We were able to jump on the January workshop for the extra bird street help over the weekend. That may be workshop on the feeder. We could do that because we had some money in place hell for that kind of purpose. What made up the budget, we didn't know. That's what we would do for. We figured there would be something that would come up that would need some help. So that's probably wise to continue whatever happens in the next year. But if other things come to mind that you feel like you need budget to support your work, this is the time to get that.
Okay, one one comment that I wanted to make is about the Airbnb and how there was a we had recommended approval of an Airbnb on East Main Street, but that was denied by the counselors. And it left me kind of wondering what they want to see because there were some things that they approved that I didn't really understand. So or they were excited about one, but not another. So you know, that's what we're going to be doing today is talking about what we want to see for a plan. And it doesn't have to be what town council wants to see. It's what we think is the right thing for our community. And we can present that to the town council and say
Why did they turn it down?
They, their concerns were that they wanted to see a big picture, which is exactly what we had already started talking about. They liked the one on Valley Street where Carmel Greer had presented and it was a whole business plan. It was, you know, the presentation was attractive. But East Main was turned down because it was just like, it's no compelling reason to approve it in their eyes. But that doesn't jive with how we acted in the past and how they had acted in the past. So that's what was a little bit puzzling. But you know, again, they said they wanted to see what the big picture is and what the plan is. And that's what we're here to do today also.
Yeah, I think they, Matt came back or correct me if I'm wrong. Across the street, it's awful story. Down here on East Main, and I didn't get to go on that. So they figure we're losing an apartment to get maybe a weekend person in here. It's not going to, you know, have a connection with the community. Whereas if it was left an apartment, it would be an apartment, somebody was going to come stay here and contribute to the community rather than just a weekend guest and go on their way. So that's the feeling I got from the vote. So it's sort of what you got.
The vote was one to three, which is an unusual count for us.
Losing the apartment was a man. There's not any apartments around rent anyhow. I can lose one that's going to be vacant part of the time. It applied to some of the counties.
So the point was this one across the street.
It's not an apartment.
It's not an apartment. It needs a lot of work and
So we're creating two spaces for visitors and we're not losing a resident. That makes sense.
No, whatever you can tell me is great.
That was what I got as a feeling from the vote.
Well, so the, the unit across the street here is the downstairs is commercial. The building in the back has been nothing, but it was residential at some point. So that would be losing a residential unit. And then the upstairs was used as commercial, right?
It's a four bedroom apartment upstairs.
Okay, so we just lost a four bedroom apartment according to that math. That doesn't really make sense. I mean, it
That's first I've heard about it being a four bedroom apartment.
George Davis living up there, Meredith and town councils live up there. It's got two rooms upstairs. It's actually two stories. So it's got two rather large bedrooms and a living room and kitchen and bathroom. And then it's got two main fixtures and it's been a residence rented for long term residence for quite some time. And then before the roof collapsed under Sarah Churchill ownership of the switching station, that was a a studio apartment that was also a residence.
The council had to vote it final on that. We had a busy enough agenda last month. It missed, it got its first reading, but it's, it's up for vote next month. But that is good new information to enter.
Next month, not this month?
Or I'm sorry, yes, in two weeks.
Oh, okay. So the, the counselors were very excited about that proposal and I think that, you know, we all were. It was beautiful. It was well put together and it's nice to have something, you know, classy, something, you know, we're talking about. But if the philosophy is we don't want to lose units in town, well, then I'm glad that they approved Bird, even who took the tiebreaker to make that happen because that will be 36 new units.
Right.
Which is good, right? If you want to keep units, but then what is the philosophy? So this is what we will be talking about later. What is our philosophy? What do we want to see? What do we recommend to town council? What approach do we want to take?
Right.
We are the planning.
Do we have anyone that can speak to that with a little bit more authority or experience? I kind of feel like we're shooting at the dark.
Yeah. Yeah. And my concern is that if we, I am pro-business. So I don't want to, I don't want to discourage people from, from bringing forth these ideas to town and saying, hey, I want to, I want to turn my apartment into an Airbnb and I want to bring tourists into town. We've lost a lot of our, you know, traditional bed and breakfast. And I don't even know if that's going to make a resurgence after COVID. I don't know how many people want to be in the same house with a bunch of strangers and anyway, what that remains to be seen. On the other hand, I also don't want to lose a bunch of, you know, I don't want to get too top heavy on the Airbnb and not have enough housing stock in town to support a local community.
Well, I think too, you know, how many Airbnbs does this size town need?
Right.
You know, right now we have Fourth of July and maybe Batto Festival that would bring a need for, for, you know, short-term housing, but I don't know what else kind of, you know, necessitates more and more.
So I've been talking to people around town who do have Airbnbs and I didn't realize like traveling nurses are staying in town. They're renting these places, you know, for, for longer term periods than just a weekend. And also I guess the, the chicken place up here is giant. They were renting their spaces out to traveling technicians and people like that. Yeah, construction workers. I don't know if they're still renewing that, but that seems to be a pretty consistent need.
That's a good
For, for, you know, not permanent residents, but you know, longer than a weekend.
And like when we have these big storms and how people come through, they
Right.
So we, we will be talking about this more in 5C. Okay, so let's, these are all excellent comments and we could have
Oh, we haven't gotten there yet. Sorry.
Some like, where are we going? Was that at the town council? Okay, excellent. Thank you. Item number four, matter is not on the agenda from the public?
Thank you for sharing that. I'll make sure this is the public hearing with details on that business here in two weeks for council.
What did you just say? I didn't catch that.
Mr. Holt shared some history about that building that's up at town council and that's new information to me. So thank you. And that would be welcome at council public hearing. Is there anything from the public online?
All right, 5A site plan review for 153 James River Road.
Micheline, I would happily share the floor with you here. We have your site plan document digitally. And what's, what's up for us here on agenda is continuing the preliminary site plan review stage there. We're looking through that checklist at the completion of the plans. I know that you're still working on a couple of parts of it, so I would invite you to talk about the status. But it does look to me that my checklist is complete and you have a preliminary site plan. Is there anything else that appears to be changing at this point, especially since our conversation last month?
Sure. So good evening, Chair and members of the planning commission. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight about this preliminary site plan. So since the, the last planning commission meeting, I, along with Gordon Seton of Tiger Fuel, Matt Lawless, Aaron Root with the ARB and representative from Bartlett Tree Services, the town arborist, all met out on the proposed Tiger Fuel property to walk the site and identify some trees, some existing mature trees on the site that perhaps could be incorporated into the site plan. And so I think that was a really productive visit. We identified several trees, especially along the Route 20 frontage, which is in the purview of the ARB that we're pretty sure can be saved or outside of our limits of disturbance. And so I just, we had a very productive meeting out on site and are, you know, thankful to Matt and Aaron for taking time out of their day to meet with us and to identify those trees. So what we're working on right now is we have the surveyors going out to the site to pick up the exact location of those trees so that we can drop them into our site plan. The ARB, I believe we're talking about this bit in a bit more detail on Thursday of this week. But as the site plan process moves forward, we'll be identifying those, you know, trees to remain on, on the site. And then hopefully after, you know, receiving preliminary site plan approval, then updating our site plan to include all the final site plan requirements. So if there's any, I know your ordinance, it does, you know, permit any revisions if you feel that's necessary for the preliminary site plan. But I'll say, I think we met everything on the checklist and I also think your ordinance, it allows a bit of flexibility for changes that are permitted to be made from the preliminary site plan to the final.
That's right. Thank you.
So Matt, do you have any more comments about this? Are you satisfied with what you can see?
I am. The Architectural Review Board has put two months into this as well. They are fully satisfied with the massing and the placement of the buildings, you know, the basic arrangement of how the buildings fit on the site. And with the colors and the materials and the signage, ARB has focused its work on that tree preservation issue. There are some really excellent mature trees on the lot and we feel it would be a shame to clear cut it and then restore landscaping with native species when there are perfectly good native species there. The property owners seem very amenable to that. If anything, it feels like the problem on this might come from VDOT, which is interested in right of way maintenance. And there are some trees that are really pretty that are awfully close to the edge of the road. So we're going to try to work together to preserve those and petition to VDOT to keep them. They haven't caused any problems so far and they're worth attempting to preserve. So if, if the town can help to communicate that with VDOT, maybe we can save some more of those trees.
Feelings that they're already there. They should be okay with them staying.
Well, VDOT, it's right of way.
Yeah.
That's a different
They try to, they try to keep the right of way clear, but if these are trees that have stood there and not been removed for 50 years.
Yeah, they're probably not going to come down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But yes, I think Micheline spoke well to the process continuing. There's other agency check-ins still to do importantly with VDOT. But I believe you have an adequate representation of the plans here that gives us more to talk about. So clearing that checkpoint of this is an adequate preliminary plan is the question for you now.
Just basically on, along the lines of the fact that all of the site plan checklist items have been satisfied?
Yes. Yes.
We're sitting, that's all we're kind of discussing about this?
That's right. Not that, not that everything anything might not change on it, really that every detail meets your satisfaction, but that all of the relevant data is here.
Okay. And so once we say it's a satisfactory preliminary site plan, then where does it go from there?
You could, this body could continue to work on it for several months. There's also some of that agency back and forth. VDOT involvement, Admiral County's involvement on storm water management. In the case of new wells, they get a health department check. Micheline, what are some of the other agencies that you generally work with on back and forth with your site plan?
Yeah, sure. So on this site, we're going to be dealing with ACSA for water and sewer. Yeah, ACSA, VDOT. And then in this case, since Admiral is your V S and P reviewing authority, we're, we're dealing directly with Al, Admiral, not D E Q.
So we'll, we'll get certifications from those agencies that this plan does what they need. For example, that the water pipes are connected in the right place and big enough to serve this property. I can't be the judge of that. ACSA will. VDOT will look at the placement of the driveway and make sure that it is the right angle and far enough away from the other intersection and their engineer will check on that. We'll look through the rest of our zoning standards. This all could take several months. And then our final approving vote is on the final site plan after which time they can go and get the
So this is not our last opportunity to ask questions and
Right. You're, you're confirming that the student turns the paper in on time and that it meets the word count. But you haven't judged it for quality yet, whether it's an A, B, or C.
So would we need a motion?
Definitely.
Personally, I'm not comfortable making a motion. So if that's more time looking in detail, make sure that we're being responsible.
Could we have a way to just talk if the site plan avenue instead of, you know?
Would that be a special?
Special with, with justice on agenda to go through, go through that checklist in more detail?
I would like an opportunity to serve a specific amount of time discussing specifically that.
That's, that's good practice. Any larger scale development is going to have this, anything that's more than like one house built at a time. So if, if construction picks up in town, checking these site plans, which could come from different builders and at different levels of quality, becomes really important and you, you don't want to enter in a site plan that's not complete and then be unable to do what you need to do with it.
Yeah.
Sure. I feel like the sticks are very significant. So you have to make sure that we're doing every due diligence that we're here.
I agree.
What's your pleasure on scheduling something like that?
What's, what's our first available? Yeah, can we do a special meeting?
Let's do a special meeting like a week or two.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we need the big, everyone should get that big map that we had last month. Do you have extra copies of that? Did you guys pick up copies?
With the checklist?
No, the site plan.
Oh, please. Yes. I wasn't sure if you all had it already.
Oh, yeah, it looks like one.
Yep. Yep, that's the piece of four. I'm sorry. I thought you already have it. Remember if you walked out from last time or not. Yeah, absolutely. That's why they're trying. Great.
They're, they're quite intense, so you're going to need another space. And, and also somewhat challenging to understand without, you know, we have the benefit of having it in front of us last month. So it was so much easier to see it in, in real life and go over it with Matt and Kelsey on the line.
Micheline? She's still on?
Yes.
Would you be comfortable attending via Zoom that meeting so that we can have you available to ask very specific questions based on what we think about between now and then?
Uh, yeah, sure. I, so I guess are you all speaking then specifically to the preliminary plan that you want to review in more detail?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I can, I can definitely be available with that for, for sure. I know for just as far as a preliminary, preliminary plan goes, and I definitely understand this is the, I think, first site planned since the Dollar General. But with a preliminary plan, this is not approving anything really. It's, it, as far as the construction document. We cannot move forward with, you know, moving dirt or anything like that with an initial, with a preliminary plan approval. So I'm, I'm, I would definitely be eager to get that scheduled as soon as possible, just so that we could move forward with, with the final site plan since that will take quite a bit of engineering work on our part. And I know that once we get the tree item figured out and figuring out just kind of final placement of everything on the site, we, we got, received very few comments from Admiral County on their V S and P review. And so we're actually in a good place with them. And so I, I guess long answer is of course I'd be available, happy to do it. And I just know my client would be very happy if that was scheduled sooner rather than later to, to go over that.
Well, we can appreciate that. I, I think we really want to be deliberate about this.
Right. I really want us to start off on the right foot as opposed to just going that passing this as a preliminary site plan and then to deal with the issues that come after that.
Yeah.
What about running it jointly or close to the ARB meeting on Thursday this week? Because they're, they're going to look at this matter in, in detail Thursday at seven. Those groups have occasionally met together to work on something like this where they're both going over it. ARB might benefit from the same kind of workshop about what all is in these plans and looking at them closely. Could that maybe work?
This is what you're saying?
Yeah.
I would be hoping to that.
I would too.
Okay.
Yeah.
ARB is at seven? Would you like to go at the same time or maybe a little before then?
No, what, why don't we meet at six and then when they start going through it, do you want to do that? Yeah.
Well, are we going to be asking the same questions at six o'clock that ARB is going to be asking at seven?
ARB's, they've already kind of narrowed it down to just the landscaping issue. And some of these items are not so germane to the ARB. So maybe if we did like everything except for landscaping first and then put, put this at the top of ARB's agenda and could finish with the landscaping, then you all could adjourn and ARB could continue.
Okay, so then maybe six thirty?
Yeah.
Okay, that's great.
So is that six thirty then this Thursday? So is that six thirty then this Thursday?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, perfect. Yeah. And I think, Matt, just as far as timing of things go, I believe we believe we submitted this on February 10th and Scottsville has a 60-day review timeline for disapproval or approval of a preliminary site plan. So we're coming up on that in about six days.
That's right.
If we're going to exceed the 60-day review timeline, I think that we would need, I guess, you to suspend the review so that if we needed a bit more time for the approval. But I just wanted to flag that we're coming up on the 60-day timeline permitted by code.
That's true. The the applicant is entitled to, you know, prompt action on this, that we not stole it. And if something's wrong, we identify that and show it. So I think the focus toward this Thursday, the seventh, we can go through that checklist, review the contents of this. And if we see something that's missing, we can clearly say that. Sound good?
So will we then be voting on it on Thursday?
That's right.
Which is the preliminary?
Right. It's the accepting a preliminary vote just means this is a complete plan. Other parts of it still may be need to be negotiated. But it's not missing anything from its table of contents that we should have.
Well, thank you for helping us. Appreciate it.
A motion to call the special meeting would be in order.
I made a motion that we call a special meeting in conjunction with the ARB's meeting on March, I mean, April 7, 2022. We will meet at 6:30 PM. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. That'll be instructive all around.
Thank you all for scheduling that.
Thank you. All right, I'd be public hearing for the the Scottsville Plans Unit Development. It's called the Public Hearing to Order. We'll give the public an opportunity to speak. At a certain point, we'll close that and then we'll have our own discussions. Of course, during the public hearing, you're also allowed to engage with the public and ask questions. All right. So going to call the public hearing to order 7:35 PM. Or is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak about the planning and development?
Welcome. Thank you.
A part of something we've been presenting to the planning board and the town council for a little bit here now. It's a big thing. It can be very complicated and it can be very simple. It's done right, protects the town and citizens. If it's done wrong, it's quite beneficial to developers. We have people in the public, like the cables, have retired, working with PUDs their entire careers, you know, mid side of now. You do have the ability to put together a citizen board to help you develop it further if you'd like with more information and more input from people that work with it, if you so choose. But it is complicated and it's serious. And once you make it, you can't change it. And it just, if you do it, to make sure you do it right is what I'm trying to say. It's kind of, okay. But it's a great, it's a great thing to have.
Thanks, Matthew.
Couple of folks online. If you care to speak, just use the hand raise icon or type a little into the chat.
And Matt, will we will we be mostly people who are ones to participate?
Yes, that's what's.
Hi, yes. I was invited the draft just this afternoon, looking through it. There are some definitely definite questions. And to kind of mirror what Matthew said, a PUD can be a really great thing if taken with the right amount of time and effort put into it, making sure that the ordinances in the town are strong and that it matches the comprehensive plan for the town. And I really do advocate doing a PUD because it can give the town a lot more control, but you also have to make sure that it is matching all of the comprehensive plan information. Just some things that that I found interesting in the draft. The gross amount of land required in some of the areas is less than what's currently required for cluster development in the residential cluster for village residential. And perhaps that can be added in or made to be net buildable land instead of gross buildable land. I know that some PUD and cluster requirements advocate using net buildable land versus just your gross buildable land. And there are lots of different resources, like Matthew said, online with the Association, Planning Association of America and other resources where this information can be covered in other ways that using cluster developments can be added into a PUD with different building bonuses. I know that somebody at the last town council meeting even brought up the rural cluster development information for the county. And maybe some of that could also play into Scottsville's development of the PUD. But I've used it before and it's something that one of my military pilot friends mentioned. Sometimes going slow means doing something fast. If you go slowly, you do it smoothly. And if you do it smoothly, you'll get it done more quickly because you're able to get the community buy-in. So I I definitely advocate for a PUD if it's done to match all of the comprehensive plans and and will eventually really benefit and not be used in a certain way against the town, but to benefit the town.
Could you give an example of what you're talking about, like an example of how the town might, you know, be in trouble because of how a PUD was not put together correctly?
Um, I'll be honest, I did not realize that there was a public hearing today. Just looking at the agenda online, I thought it was just a continuation of discussion last week. So I don't have specific examples. But it is something that a lot of planning, if you if you are talking about the Planning Association of America, for instance, they do recommend that a PUD can be a great thing if your town supporting ordinances are also good. But you can also have different groups that come in and kind of take advantage of a less strict PUD. So I'm sorry, I don't have a specific suggestion or or example, but.
Well, that's okay.
I can I can get you something later.
Right. I'm just interested in the pros and cons that we're talking about. I mean, I think I think that we are moving forward to create this. But I want to know where some of these pitfalls can come from. If anybody.
One example would be using solely net gross land over net buildable land. If if you're asking for open spaces, but those open spaces are areas that no one would build on anyway. What open space, like are you actually gaining? Like if it's a if it's a steep hillside, for example, and a developer wouldn't build on that, but can use for density purposes and density bonuses can use that land solely as part of their percentage, whatever the town works out. You know, you you kind of have to weigh that. Would it be better to do net buildable land and have the town have the opportunity of gaining either property for public use that could actually be used over something that would just be an empty hillside anyway?
Right, okay. That's really helpful. I mean, that kind of idea gives us the sense that we have to be very deliberate in, you know, each aspect of it.
And even including those billing bonuses, like I mentioned. I know that with the cluster development, the rural cluster development, for example, there's one that was recently proposed to the Almaral County Planning Commission. I believe it was called Bamboo Estates or something bamboo in the name. But they used a a building bonus. And also for a small amount of acreage, they built a few more houses, but a lot of open space was remaining for public use and and availability.
Okay.
Mr. Holt?
Yeah, and I think to kind of go off a little bit more on that, it'd be a perfect example of dedicating an area to a elementary school to be built that's in Spawntown. It's an exaggeration, but that gives you the kind of example that she's also talking about. The other issue is PUDs are for big developments, so to speak. And by saying someone can have a PUD on an acre or two acres, that's really not what a PUD is designed for because you can only do so much within that. So that will allow a builder to get around some of the local ordinances by applying a PUD to it if you weren't, if you define a PUD to, say, not have a size, right? Right? So I could I could go in and, well, example, I think of this, the property that we put a special use permit where they're building shoes. How someone could then take that property, which is not large, but it's large enough, and turn it into a PUD. And next thing you know, you could have mixed-use building, all industrial, whatever, you could have that use on that area that would have been too small. It is already resold, but because it's in village residential and it now has a PUD, but doesn't have a limit or a restriction on the size, your neighbors now have a factory next to them. And that's not what they bought into and that's not what their property values bought into. So it's something again that, and I'd say that will happen, but it is something that you don't look at all the what ifs to everything you're putting in condition. How could this be abused? Or how can this go awry? It's not that anyone's trying to, at least I like to think, it's not that anyone's trying to cheat or create a problem. It's just if you don't think of it. And then someone else does who's clever enough to think of it. It doesn't work around, right? The more rules you make, the more loopholes you create. That's just the rules of it, right? So that's just one example of an innocent PUD. Well, why should you put a restriction on acres? Because it's what a great, you know, I don't know, at the soccer field or something. But that could create an issue that we didn't predict on, that could create industrial in the middle of the residential that was never never imagined. But once you put it in there, it's the minimum requirement by that zone, they have the right to do it. You can't really do anything about it. So that's, I think, what they're talking about. And I'm sure Susan was here. I'm sure she can give a few examples. Which again, is why it's a possibility, a moment to create a few things like we did with the small area. It took us six months to straighten out. What almost took two years to do. Because you guys are busy, the town council is busy, and we were meeting for a while there, maybe once or twice a week, to try to make it happen, meeting again, you know, in that time. So it's just, there's more experience out there that people can't get into this, to answer these kinds of problems. A smaller area, where members of council came to meetings, there's a lot that dipped. Anyone had the ability to come to this meeting and understand it better, rather than just seeing the document, which is what smaller area was, it's this massive document that no one could make a chance to chance, but it really, it was really just notes. It wasn't really confidence. Everyone says, oh, that's fair. So it's just, we don't talk too much. It's another club for, you might want to consider that.
Thank you.
I have a question about the PUD. So this would definitely not be a by right. And and I totally hear hear what you're saying. And I absolutely think that we should be very deliberate. And I love the idea of having small group sessions with community members to put this together. I I just want to know for my own clarification, you would have to, if somebody did come forth and say, hey, I want to, I want to apply a PUD to my half-acre lot, we could absolutely say no, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, good. All right. So it's not it's not granting anybody by rights for anything?
That's right. The that's right. The the PUD baseline has nothing by right.
Okay.
Every everybody's current zoning stays the same if this tool is added to the box. And somebody comes with a new idea and needs a plan, not quite to this level of detail, but almost to this level of detail.
Right.
To try to answer some of those questions. And Mr. Holt's points well taken that if you approve it with ambiguity on it, it creates wiggle room. So we ought to be very strict in what are these details?
Okay.
And make sure that that's accounted for. So we try to get that in the table of contents on 14.14. Looks very similar. It's the next to last page of this. Looks pretty similar to what goes in a site plan. But if there were a detail like the colors of the buildings that you thought was really important, say, I don't want to approve anything until I know what color it is, then put that in. If I have to say, it must be this stuff.
Are there any other participants in the public?
Can I answer a follow-up to the question I was asked, if that's okay?
Sure.
For an example, if if you want some follow-up information from Minnesota's Pollution Control Agency, where they were doing sustainable developments, there's a great article called From Policy to Reality written by Brian Ross. And it it kind of details some of the pitfalls that you could get into if the PUD is not designed in a way that that administers to a an institution or a town's comprehensive plan. So that's just a follow-up. It's not exactly an example, but it's a great resource to help follow up on some of those examples.
Yeah.
Thank you. Did you say moss or rock? I'll need it.
Brian Ross.
R O T H.
R O S S.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions for the public? Oh, no, ma'am. All right. So I'm going to close the public hearing at this point and allow the commissioners an opportunity to discuss or make a motion if one or two.
I think that we should definitely meet with members of the public and do this the way that we did eventually did a comprehensive plan. And just take each of these topics, like required open spaces, and just have a meeting on that. And just, you know, every section of this thing, I feel like we need to really discuss and take apart and.
Because if this is a one-time thing, then we are planning for generations.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and and it's exactly why I was asking about the pitfalls and the pros and the cons to this because it's one of the things that I've kind of vowed to concentrate on and and that's seeing all sides and all of the information. And to ask as many questions as possible about what goes into this.
One of the areas where I've seen them have really poor results is when they don't respect the mixed use or kind of traditional design elements. Mixed use or kind of traditional design elements. They, PUDs have been criticized heavily in the past twenty-five years for making suburban sprawl happen. When the ordinance allows for, say, increased density as long as you provide neighborhood amenities. Then you get five hundred houses on cul-de-sacs with some tennis courts. And then the next project over down the road is the same thing. Um, so Fredericksburg area, Southern Richmond suburbs, Fairfax and Loudoun County. Produced a lot of PUDs during their peak sprawl era. And the developer represented, well, you're getting necessary housing. That looks pretty and has lots of nice amenities. And the governing body said, okay, that sounds good. Um, and when you get too many of them in a row, now you're in a place where, um. There's not a healthy mix of uses, you have to drive everywhere. Uh, the neighbors don't actually know each other very well, local businesses don't get a chance to start up. And the locality is spending too much money on sending all of its kids to school and not making enough money back on business pays. So that has been a heavy critique of sprawl. And if this is the tool that makes that happen, then it must not be a good tool. Um, and I think the, the urbanist rebuttal of that is, well, you didn't rank your priorities effectively. If you wanted mixed-use sidewalk abilities, then you should have put that in the ordinance. And not approved subdivisions that didn't have sidewalks, that didn't have a bodega or a coffee shop. Or a hardware store. If that was what you wanted, you should have put it in your ordinance that that was which one. Uh, so yeah, so starting off that community workshop with a real serious discussion of what do we really want to see?
Right.
And make sure that that priority list right up front really is what we want. Because that's what developers will bring and that's how we'll have to go. Does that help? For how this handled.
Absolutely not. No, it does. Very much so. Thank you.
What would the logistics organization, et cetera, um, entail if we were to ask for a town task force on this topic? Like what would our notion be? How would that pan out?
Um, direct staff to put a team together. Um, what we had on small area plan, like Mr. Holt described, we had a, a first draft that was too funky. Uh, hard to read, it wasn't clear enough about what the goals really were. And so we said, uh, timeout, let's get some more volunteer help and rewrite this thing. And there was Jim Pachi was the commission, was the council representative on it. Um, and Nancy Brown was the planning permission representative, is that right? Um, and, uh, got some involved volunteers, they held some extra meetings. And then brought the draft back after, what, four months or so, months, yeah. Um, a much more elegant document that was very helpful to us. Um, so those wouldn't need to be special meetings of the permission. Um, with just one council member and one commissioner, who can grab their volunteers and be a little bit more nimble. Two of you could do that. Once three of you does it, it becomes a special meeting. I might, I'd also look at like special outreach to the neighbors where these PUDs might be. Most sensitively used. And our, our two sites that we've talked about are the factory building. And the Laanalbana Springs open area. Those are big sites where this might be used. And then we have a separate question of like, how small do we want these to get? If you set a, a ten-acre minimum, but there's only a few places to tackle it. Um, if you leave the minimum open space for the, the. Take away that minimum, then you can get smaller info projects like the one I showed you, which I, I do think that's fair. But it affects how it works.
We really want that binary. So.
Let's just stop talking about anything else.
Just check in with that.
Perhaps.
And the Italian villa, please.
What are some of the goals that you have in mind about who should be involved? If we're recruiting a team, what kinds of characteristics do you look for in that?
I think the experience is, is a big part of that. Just because I feel, um, you know, I feel confident to give my opinion and my thoughts about it and to research and get more ideas. But I've never worked with a PUD before, so I don't know. That's why I was like, cross-times people, because I need to know, you know, um, from someone who's experienced. Um, so guidance as far as putting something like this together.
Sure. Is there any chance that we'd be able to speak with somebody from Alamo County who's had experience putting something like this together?
Yeah.
To the ramifications that have occurred as a result?
Sure.
I would love that.
That's a great idea. Can we get Thomas Jefferson Planning Commission back here or do they charge a consulting fee?
Um, I think they'll do a little bit of outreach to begin with. Uh, you, you probably get one good work session for free. Before they start seeing and drinking on Saturday and Monday.
Sure. Should we ask for money for, in the budget, for sort of outreach?
Uh, especially if you think the task is going to continue natural at first. Then, then planning forward in the new year would be good. Yeah, so part of that, part of that is timeframe, right? How, how, uh. Getting the word out to folks, because this went very quickly. I do apologize about both. We only did the bare minimum on this for the public hearing, so this, this is clearly insufficient. Um, we need to do better than we thought it was, thanks.
I think that somebody's bound to have the magical answer for getting the word out to this town. Um, it's, it's one of the recurring conversations that I've had with people is that. I didn't know, you know, we all knew that the, uh, market was opening in April. Some people thought end of April, some people thought middle, middle of April. And then it opened up and we were all caught by surprise, or a lot of us were anyway. And I heard from a lot of people that they didn't know.
Yep.
That it was going on. So, anyway, I digress.
Yeah, I, I, I hate Facebook, but I feel like a lot of people are on it.
Yeah.
And I, I feel like we need to be making these announcements on our Facebook page, you know. Several weeks in advance, you know, reading up just reminders.
My personal opinion is that we should have something on the website that allows people to sign up for a. Something or other.
On the server.
Yes.
You know, um, something that says we can contact you when we have something.
Right.
Awesome going, which we do.
Yeah. A mailing list.
Yeah. And pushing, maybe pushing minutes out to people or pushing the agenda out to people.
I, I, I struggled with it on this one, like right, right after I, I got Ms. Woods's note, I, I realized like. Oh, I sh- I should let more people know that this is happening. And I tried to think, okay, who in my contacts am I going to invite to this? And how do I decide who to invite and who not to invite? And I was very uncomfortable doing that, so I didn't send anything, which is not a good place to be.
Right, right.
So it'd be better if it would be said.
Start somewhere though.
Yeah.
Right.
We've got to start somewhere.
I like the mailing list idea. I think, I think we should, if we create a space on the website where people can sign up.
Yep.
You know, or, you know, subscribe to a mailing list.
Yep.
And then the rest of us can do the, you know, the lifting as far as putting notices out to people and on Facebook and. You know, at the library and down at the farmer's market and all the bulletin boards out there. Trying to get the word out.
We'll, we'll try the free version of Melcham. And see what that does us. And if we need more features, we can start subscribing to that.
Right.
Yeah, we have, um, a town of Scottsville only has five hundred and some odd people, but what do they, they let you do like? Five thousand for free or?
Oh, really? For the send-out?
Not that many.
Well, you do two thousand.
Two thousand?
Yeah.
A lot of people.
I think we're good.
Okay.
Got it.
To speak to what you're saying, um, you're talking about social media and everything, and you mentioned. The library, bulletin boards, et cetera. Um, personally speaking, for bloodites like me who are not at all engaged in social media.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, I know that there are a lot of people, especially, uh, people who, uh, are an older generation who don't. Um, engage with social media the same way that some of us do. Um, physical, um, presence in actually creating outreach, I think is going to be a very important part of this. And not to discount the use of social media because that's an incredible value.
I mean, it needs to be a mix of everything.
Absolutely.
Well, when you run into that person who's like, it's been my lifelong dream to start a small town newspaper. We have a, an opening.
Right. Yeah, I feel like this needs to be for everything, not for planning.
Yeah.
Because, yes.
And as we know, this is not our role. It's good to workshop this.
Yeah.
In front of everyone.
See, town council needs like a marketing position.
Oh, my God.
Would you, if, if we did a monthly newsletter and I shared some of the action items, would you be willing to do like an editorial or a press note? Yeah.
Well, and, you know, Stuart Ronson has put together, um, the Scottsville happenings.
He's already doing happenings.
It's usually pretty comprehensive. Um, some of the information is, you know, the same every time. But for the most part, he gets some of the meat of it.
Yeah.
You know, some sort of collaboration there might be a way to go to.
Right. And he has a, that is a good, it's good information, but he makes it fun. It's got pretty pictures in it too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And there's a board outside of this building, isn't it?
There is that.
That's what I was talking about.
Yeah, that's what you were talking about. Okay. I thought you were talking like the side of the building, kind of.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But, um. Yeah.
But that, that lets you, that lets you combine really wide outreach to a lot of people. And if you got a mailing list of a thousand people on it, you put out a survey, you get hundreds of responses. But then also this more like a focus group that has more expertise. That could really work on detailed markup and bring some reports back to you. On this ordinance as a research project.
Yeah. Um, and I think what I, I kind of envision for this is, you know, maybe one or two of us. Holding these meetings with the, you know, the public.
I would love if we rotated to each of us.
Yeah, and then, and then we can have a special meeting where we come back with our findings.
Yeah, yeah. Absolutely. I think this is good, it's good. You know, we're starting from. The beginning on a lot of these things and trying to make a deliberate step forward. I think it's really important.
And we're able to do this now, having described it in our comp plan, our small area plan. That this is a regulatory tool that we think is in the town's interest. And we know that there are properties where it could be used, so it has some real urgency. It's not a fake exercise, but we're not, we're out in front of developers. But we're, we're not doing this because somebody has something very specific in mind. So we, we can decide what we want, set those rules, and then anybody who wants to invest can bring us an idea and we can judge it. That's important.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I, I think, you know, I really want to hear from experts as well as, you know, just our community members. What do people want to see here? I've heard a lot of people say they want to see, you know, medical facilities and nursing homes. And, you know, those kinds of things here in this community so that we don't have to go outside the community all the time for those things. But very helpful information to have.
Right.
Um, so.
Yeah, so, so is, is there a, is there a way that we can use these rules to help it back?
Right.
Great. Glad to hear.
My kind of see this as like a model going forward for the comp plan updates too, is this is how we can. Go about doing the policy.
There seems like there's a lot of synergy there.
Yes, yes. If, if this passed, and we had that in pool, it would really. Put a point on the goals of a comp plan. Right? Because we could make this more valid about, okay, using our inflection, what do we want to see happen? Um, and that gets very, 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 I think, that's very, of what's okay and what's not okay.
Well, and, and to that end, I think we all need to spend a little more time on the comprehensive plan. We agree with it at home and then going into the focus groups with this in mind and hearing the feedback. And taking that into the, the focus groups for the comprehensive plan, bringing it up there as well.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, next year, right?
Yeah. Could I raise that final question for the center? Um, I, I had a, um, an idea come in from Erin Root over at SCAN. She spotted a grant opportunity from the Robert Johnson Foundation. Does quite a lot of public health research. And they were, um, sharing a pretty large grant opportunity, thirty-five agencies, essentially, one point two million dollars. Um, that they were interested in expanding, um, practical research on the connections between public health. Um, structural racism and local policy. Um, and what kinds of local government research projects could be done to help make more sense of that. Um, and we had had a couple of conversations along those lines in this body and town council in the past couple of years. But those topics don't really show up much in our current comprehensive plan. Um, Nancy Gill's, um, public health group has done some great work on that. But that group was only just beginning to come together when our current comp plan was done. So, um, Erin asked me, is there anything that the town could do with this? And what it made me think of was, if, if the foundation gave us forty thousand dollars to help us do. A comp plan update that put more of a central focus on community health and equity. That would be new and kind of unusual for small towns. And perhaps the best practice that the foundation would want to, you know, see the results of share. And we could lean on, um, Nancy's Health Equity and Rural Areas Group to help carry that forward. But get some more specialists help on it. Um, Nancy, do you want to say more about that? Am I making sense? It's good. Does that have something to do?
Yeah.
Um, we have some time left on it. I'll, I'll give that a try. It doesn't preclude all of the, um, local items that we already talked about. But, um, I'll poke around with that foundation and see if that's something that gets covered.
So what do you guys want to do for the next steps? Do you want to try to get this going in the next month or so? Well.
Is within the month a viable goal given what we've been putting together? Or use the month to get publicity to, uh, create interest and then schedule the first use for there?
How, how do you see the structure of this? Um, is this something that you would be able to help us with, Matt? Like putting together? Um, well, have you done this sort of thing before and what have you done in the past?
It's, it sounds very similar to the small area plan kind of process of, um. Looking for some champions and expertise in the community. Um, and keeping in touch with you all about, um, extra meetings. Uh, not to have any too much, but to have you individually be as involved as you care to be. Um, and meeting with those residents, setting up the Melcham account. Put this up on the website, that's not one. Um, and then I think the, the announcements that, um. This is a, a real policy project that the town takes seriously and we want to hear from folks. I think there's energy and involvement from last month that's still around. And inviting folks who participated then to say, you know, this will help us think farther ahead on the next one. Um, I think that will get a response.
Um, so, I mean, we can also offer donuts. Yes, you know, people like food, so, um, yeah.
Would you be willing to speak, uh, in some degree to what went well and what didn't work so well? When the comprehensive plan was, uh, undergoing a similar process? What went well, what would you like to see different that would better facilitate something like this?
I think what you guys are talking about takes it a little bit beyond what we had. Um, we were tasked specifically with a document that existed on how to make it more readable and understandable. on how to make it more readable and understandable. So, um, Jim Tashin's main objective was to basically edit stuff out. And the more we edited stuff out, the more what was there, contradicted other things that were in there. And it didn't match things that the town had. I can't get exact examples. And so at some point, um, Susan Cable actually took the whole document, pulled it apart and put it back in comprehensive plan, uh, in a format that she matched off of, do you remember which? It was some other community that she, she, she put it in like six groups or whatever. But she pulled it apart, put it back together, which was fantastic. The tough part was we didn't have much time then to go through. So we finally got it in the format. But then going back through and like, what exactly is in each line became difficult. We just ran out of time. So what I hear you guys, it's maybe a misunderstanding, is we're thinking about the community meetings that we have for the bird, which is different. So in some of these areas, we're talking about a pod and want to know what the community would like to see our community look like. That's, that's one thing. But you still, in my opinion, with the work that we wound up doing, we met sometimes twice a week. You know, it wasn't once a month. It was every week and then sometimes twice a week. There's a lot of work. Matt, you tore that thing apart and put it back together endlessly, correct? I mean, that, you, there was a lot, it wasn't just, you know, a, a couple of corrections. And every time we came back, we were like, oh, what about this? Oh, I forgot about that. But what about this? Oh, that's great. It was really, Matt, but we were starting with a rather disjointed document. It was really a lot of everyone's ideas. And I would hate for the pub to be everyone's ideas and then us trying to put it back together again. So the way I envision this from what you guys are talking about is community outreach is doing for certain questions. Like what do we want it to look like? What do we imagine? If mixed-use being or not, or et cetera. While having a parallel, a committee who is going through, does this match the ordinance? Does this match the small area plan? What is the proper wording? And what we learned, I think, in the small area plans, we need to have a format. It'd be, it'd be more helpful to have a format than it is to just, what do they call it? Spitballing, throwing some ideas out and then you can put it all together. I think it really needs to be structured in the beginning instead of trying to fix it later on. So what I hear you guys talking, and I could be wrong, is that you're talking two parallel ways of dealing with it. Some things need to be addressed to the public to get their feedback. That'd be very helpful. Again, what we give it is while you have a committee of committed, and we only had like five people that were really there all the time, you know, with the, and we didn't have multiple people from the planning board. Uh, Lindsay was pretty consistent with it. And Jim was pretty consistent with it. And then even in the end, sometimes they were there and they weren't there. But we were still moving. And Matt, of course, was there at this time. We were moving forward. So I imagine that your document needs to be formatted and move forward with the experience that we have. Let's say, and I keep pointing it out, Susan and, and Lewis Cable are very, very familiar with pods to be able to help that, just like they did the small area plan. But we still need, what are the questions we want to talk to the public to then interject into that document that is moving forward? I would hate to see that we're going to do that, and we're going to push that, and then we might move it forward.
Yeah.
Because in, in my opinion, in six months, we could have done it more efficiently.
Yeah.
But we were dealing with what we had and answered. I don't think we really understood what process would work better or not.
I, I think town council would have given a deadline. Like, we want this back rewritten and ready to vote on in six months.
They absolutely.
It could have taken a few more years if we had let it.
Right.
But, I mean, we had a consultant design this.
Yep.
Plan.
Yep.
Thirteen years ago. So the, the bones of this should be really good. The question is whether we're comfortable with some of the perhaps loopholes or not.
Yeah.
And public input from experts who have done this sort of work in the past is useful to, to that. But I think the part that the public would be most interested in would be fourteen point one, which is the objectives that should be from the comprehensive plan.
Right.
So if we like to cut the comprehensive plan and all the drafts that we worked on, including most recently two thousand and eighteen, then these objectives should be a really good starting place, but it's nice to get extra input to see if they're prioritized well.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. And, and I hear two, two things from Matt that jumped out, that it has a community element, a technical element.
Right, right.
That, that this fourteen point one, what are the goals of this thing, is really good for community feedback. What are you looking for? Do you, do you care about bicycling? Do you care about dark sky? Or is it more important that there be that job creation? You're willing to have a business with light at night if it creates people who can work a night shift? Fair thing to talk about. Then at the, at the other end of it, looks like a more technical engineering kind of question that we could get our specialists in. What needs to be in this plan? Like, because Kelsey was describing, she, she drew a site plan that matched our ordinance. If we didn't have in there that we cared about landscaping, she wouldn't have drawn the landscape there. So to get some specialist help on, you know, this was best practice thirteen years ago, but maybe it's not anymore.
Mm-hmm.
Um, are these the details that you want to see as you consider something?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I don't know that you'd be able to get the, if you just put this out in a survey, you wouldn't get good information.
Right.
Um, does that kind of make sense as like the two questions?
Yes. Oh, that's absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. Might I just add one thing, too, is when you're looking at that, it's not always about what do you delete. When you're trying to specialize it to Scottsville.
Oh, yeah.
Usually what are you going to add?
Yes.
Right? Because these are based on, Alma County has a pod, Somerton has a pod, this is what they put in there. But I would imagine our community would want to add things that are very specific to us.
Right.
And that would be something that, you know, it's, it's not so much that it's just a form and it's made. Just like the one that was presented to us was, was made, but we have to pull it apart.
Right.
This does, I'm not saying we're going to pull this apart, because this doesn't spitball. This is an actual document. Um, but I am saying that you probably will want to take a look and go, if this happens, what if? If this happens, then this happens. So is that good for our community or is it necessary for our community? That's all. So each one of those things have to be applied to us.
I, I would love to give this to a builder who was experienced but wasn't really trying to do something around here and could give us a, a neutral answer of, oh, yeah, if I have these rules, here's what I would do.
Right.
And then we could kind of judge whether we like that. Um, because, yeah, I'm, I'm not going up, but I don't know if that's any kind of practical.
So maybe a good place to start would be to have a couple of focus groups with the public on the objectives section. And then in the meantime, we get a board of technical people, builders and people who've written pods, and we, we have a group of maybe five or six experts that we can say, we've gotten all this feedback from the public, we have this document, let's sit down and, and create this document with just the input from that technical group of people after we get the input from the public.
I've had this, well, I only want to put it out there that if someone came up to me and asked me what I thought I would want to see in a pod, you know?
Well, we would have to be more deliberate.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. But I'm just saying that maybe it might be a good idea to take a look at it technically first. Then we could know a little bit more about what we need to ask about. Especially if things need to be added that are specific to the area. But, I mean, that's just my opinion. I just thought I'd put it out there. Um.
Yeah, whi- which way does it, which way does it go if you're? I think I, I think I see a, a fairly open community conversation about what do you, how do you want to see the community change?
Mm-hmm.
And we try to then line that up with these goals.
Right.
And if, as people are describing, you know, the Scottsville of their dreams, if they say, uh, I don't know, coordinated architecture is really important, or something like that, then we know who's got it in there.
Right.
Um, but yeah, trying to, trying to take the kind of, you heard this is probably things, the kind of things that people say they want doesn't line up very closely with how laws.
Doesn't line up with how.
How this law is written, right? People won't talk this way.
Right. Well, and I mean, we, we've done lots of focus groups and the small area plan, we had a year's worth of focus groups. What feedback did we get that people were interested in? And does, is that, does that correspond to the comprehensive plan at large? I mean.
Or does our comp plan have a problem?
Right.
Yeah, if it doesn't.
If, I mean, if we're going to do focus groups, they, they absolutely have to have the comprehensive plan in mind and has to refer back to it. So maybe the starting point should be, hey, this is our comprehensive plan. What are your thoughts on these goals? Does this still ring true to what you want to see just backfill right now?
So perhaps revising and updating the comprehensive plan should be the force that comes before the part.
I mean, at, at the minimum, it's got to go hand in hand. But we can't have a con- a conversation about this pub without also having a conversation about the comprehensive plan goals.
Yeah, yeah.
Matt, I'm sorry. Can we, can we move the camera back to the commissioners?
Thank you.
And maybe we already have a lot of information we already need from all of these. You know, the, the small downtown area plan, you know, all of the surveys that have gone out in the last fifteen years and all of the feedback we've gotten.
Well, there's just one area, so.
Right, but maybe we can take that information and, and apply it to this.
Yeah.
Without asking for more, I don't know.
Well, and, and that's a good starting point. Our most recent round of surveys, um, focus groups gave us this sort of feedback. How well does that resonate for you, this group? Whichever group we, we have. And, you know, I could think of several different areas in our town that would definitely want to have a seat at the table because it's not just down here by the west, uh, west downtown.
No.
It's also, uh, Alavanna, um, Pat Dennis, right, as I was called.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, there's lots of acreage around there that people can do things with. Um, even up Warren, those neighbors. So, I'm having, definitely. It's a big, it's a bigger conversation than just the pub.
Yes. And the, I think the recruiting question can be pretty candid that as, as there's pressure, the real estate market continues, any five acre piece of land could be up for grabs. And I don't know which one's going to come in next. So, I mean, not to scare people, but like, it's important that you show up for this and talk about what's important so that you see something that you like and not something that you don't like.
And I think, um, to your point, I, I think that there's so many unique perspectives that we might have as Scottsvilleians that might color some of what the experts would have to add to it. So I agree. I don't know how this conversation should happen, but again, it just, again, it all feels like it's all got to kind of happen at the same time to make it.
It sounds to me like we should be speaking to these experts first to get them a, a clearer picture of how this should be structured, what all the tenants are, everything that's necessary in the document, and then use that as the basis.
Or, or to see if it needs any updating because we, I mean, it's been thirteen years, so maybe there are, there is better wisdom out there.
And a, and a big housing, like, recession. Uh, and a big change in the market during the republic. So, yeah, the, the planner who wrote this, PJ DMC doesn't look at it anymore. They retired.
Right.
Um, so maybe the new staff there had some ideas of, oh, no, we wouldn't have done it this way.
Right.
Maybe that's the first place to start, and this.
Sure.
Yeah, Tom Jefferson, then around here.
Yeah, uh, that's about. A, a tech briefing plus to, to your point of a re-summarie of what we already have.
Right.
What have we done since our last comp plan update to, you know, find out what we know about the neighborhood?
Yeah. Can we, can we do that before we really get into the comp plan? Can we have like a an update of where we're at?
It's a great idea. You know, here, here's what's in it. Here's what we have sent in. This comprehensive plan has a bunch of goal statements. I haven't done a progress report on those. Of the things that we said we wanted four years ago, how many of them are done? And how many of them have we changed our mind on and actually don't all the times? That's a good place to start.
Do you think you can do that for us by the, our next meeting next month? Or is that ambitious? You started.
Um, the, the invitations to the experts, that's easy. The, the plan document, I'm pretty familiar with. So I don't think that will be more than half of it to, to re-mark it up and come through.
The, when you say plant document, you mean the pub?
The current.
Okay, awesome. Oh, great. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Um. I can see where I did this down.
And then the public message is, a process is coming. We're, we're finding our footing. We're gathering all of our information. Get ready to be invited to things.
Right.
Start any intention, talk to your friends. Think about this question of what it is that you're looking for in different places.
Sign up for our email.
Yeah, really, there's.
Yeah.
More's coming, yes.
And think about the things that, you know, bothered you about, you know, our um, special use permits that just went through with um, the Bird project and the Lennam project, you know? What about the, that brought you to these meetings to support it or to, you know, put it down?
Yeah.
You know, what is that, that we could make improvements on in the future or?
Because that process will respond. What, what could, uh, what could make that smoother?
Yeah. And so to kind of build on that, uh, you know, that debate. You know, here's an opportunity to shape the future, the plan for the future.
Right. And at its best, this pub tool has the potential, I think, to be really consensus building. Because we're very clear about what we want as a community. And if we agree on those things, builders will only bring things that satisfy these things. And if they don't, it will be very easy to tell them, no, that's wrong. And if they like it, we'll be able to say, great, this is what we said we wanted to deliver it. Easy to say that. Thank you. That's super helpful.
Okay, so it's, we could either make a motion on this or just let it rot, right?
Uh, yeah, the, the stat guidance is clean. Good.
Absolutely. That's, that's all we need at the moment. It's just, as you said, a discussion for you.
Yeah.
Next, other question?
All right. So are we ready to move on to the next one?
Yes.
All right. Nancy, step forward on transient lodging.
So we have been discussing a lot about transient lodging, I think in general, especially in the planning commission. Um, I checked today, that's the fourth um, on our business licenses, since that started at the beginning of the year, deadline was March first. And we have, let's see, five out of eight of the properties that I found through Airbnb that were, uh, renting out on air, well, on Airbnb and for transient lodging, five out of eight have already had their licenses. Um, that's kind of important because the way we have it set up, it's about the local business. So every single property you have, say you have three properties that you own in Airbnb, but you need to fill out paper, you need to fill out paperwork with us. That's a business license for, for each of us. So each address that you're, you're, you're doing an Airbnb about. Um, I think we are still working on the issue that we discussed previously about. Uh how these services can provide automatic payments. Just for us, it is it is a super, there's a super clar- clarity on which which payment is. Is permanent to which uh business owner, in the same way that having somebody who would just come to our office and draw off a check. With their quarterly uh transit transient occupancy tax would be. Uh beyond that, I think that was a bigger update. Um like with everything with us, we could just follow up and remind business owners, I think, inform them first of how. Uh our taxes don't work, and then reminding them that the the business license pass over. We have passed March first. Uh beyond that, I also looked into, cause I think there were questions about. How well uh there has been, uh how well the town has been receiving those quarterly taxes. So I have something that's a little bit more on my side, a little bit more uh. Practical, but not very presentable, so I wrote up a little bit of notes. Um I think that what we, there needs to be a little bit more of. It's kind of a mixed bag between the last year I looked at of uh quarterly, so it's every three months. So uh right now, I received my, our first for this quarter, which would have been ending in March. Uh but for the last year, it's a mixed bag between the eight services of of. When people are bringing in their quarterly taxes, so in the same way that it might be prudent to remind people that uh. Each each address you have on Airbnb needs to fill out a business license. There should, we could do a little bit more follow up on. The quarterly uh tax, the quarterly tax report to us. Uh I think part of it is speaking to a new owner, because there's been a change in management. And then talking to uh especially business owners who still need to file their business licenses that kind of coincide, that they also need to remember to. Um send in their quarterly reports. But yeah, I think that would be the most, I think. One thing thinking about today, listening to uh the planning commission, it is an interesting question that it's. Very, I would find it very curious. And it kind of be an endeavor to figure out what actually was is seen as like a reasonable housing stock. Not a housing stock, but Airbnb stock in a town. It's not my area of expertise, but it's kind of an interesting thing to kind of. Wrap around as I think the planning commission has also been curious about that too. But I haven't seen anything clear beyond that, it's kind of focused on what information we had in a town hall.
So so to recap, we have eight Airbnbs in town?
Yes.
So eight apartments that are being used for Airbnb units, okay.
Yeah, exactly.
And so. Uh we've got Airbnb, which is like a brand. Well, that, yeah, we should probably use the quotation marks. The quotation marks.
Cause one of those eight is more of a traditional, yeah, motel.
Okay, alright. Where in the world did I get some sort of outlandish number of the uh Airbnbs in this area?
I thought there were more than that, too.
I thought it was like a really inflated number that we were informed of. And um and it's fine if it's not true, but I have this, you know, this feeling that we were told there were more. Airbnbs in this area than eight.
I think that comes from where is Scottsville?
Yeah, oh, okay. And so, yeah, cause they wouldn't be reporting that by locality or anything like that.
With, uh, yes, when you, when you type Scottsville into the website, it shows you places that are well outside of town limits.
Yeah.
What that makes me worry about though is if we're counting on Airbnb to spend the tax money to the right place.
Yeah.
If they don't know where a town limit is, then the county's getting a lot.
Yeah.
Or vice versa, we're getting the county's money.
Well, let's just keep getting the county's money.
Until they realize they want it back. They don't.
I'm so sorry.
Um, I mean, this is why, this is different, but when I moved to town, even the DMV didn't recognize that Scottsville was.
It's own place.
It's own place. So I had like my work, my car was still garaged, it was a different location, and I was paying taxes there and realized that, so. I think that could be an issue.
Yep.
Um.
I'm still trying to hear from Airbnb corporate about how their. Payment sharing works, it sounds like there's a box that you can check when you set up as a host that says Airbnb, please take care of the taxes.
Right.
And I don't yet trust that that works.
Right. Imagine Airbnb, like, what about the RBOs and.
Same, same, same role, right? Same role.
So, yeah, so about, I don't know, back in about a few weeks, a month ago, when I reviewed that, um. It seemed to be the same listing, like we talked about previously, between those two services.
Okay.
And then I quickly looked today, this afternoon, as I updated what business licenses came in. It seems like it's the same amount, that I don't see anything really new on Airbnb. And to go off of Max, when I first did this exercise, a big thing was figuring out where our town line was. And what the site considered as Scottsville and what actually stood within our town limits.
Well, and um. These quarterly tax reports, I mean, you can kind of tell how this Airbnb is doing. Like how often they're getting people in and out of there and things like that.
Yes.
Um, do you all make any kind of assessment of that? Um, just to give a sense of how much people are using Airbnbs in Scottsville?
Um, yes, the. The business license, like details are are private, so I I can't say like exactly how much money they're making.
I understand.
But yes, we we know. We know how many bookings there are.
I know that's maybe a a touchy kind of thing, but it might be worth assessing that over a period of time to get a sense of how much. These BNB's are getting business, you know, does that help?
That provides a perspective on whether we need more.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, I don't wanna, you know, like we said, we're. We wanna encourage business, but, you know, if we're gonna make a plan for Scottsville going forward. And wanting to have the inventory available to people for long term housing as well as short term. Then we need some guidelines as to how busy these places get, I guess. That's not our our role to assess.
Yeah, I'd like to know. If if we really, you know, it's just, it's a concern, and I think it will be, uh as we get more and more applications for these things. How much stock is is long term rental in Scottsville? Like, I, could we, could I pass town with finding out what our our long term rental stock is? And then we will have a good baseline for, this is the long term rental stock, this is transient lodging. Um because I've done a little bit of research online as to, you know, the pros and cons of Airbnb's.
Yeah.
In bigger cities and smaller locations and how that impacts local neighborhoods. There isn't a really clear cut so far that I've been able to find. Idea as to like, when does the scale tip? Into this is too much for for our locale.
Right.
Um so I think we're gonna have to make that determination, and we might wanna reach out to some smaller towns. That are similar to this town and find out how they're handling things. And I'd also be curious, you know, if we're gonna start turning down applications. What teeth does the town have to say, hey, you turned down your application, you went ahead and did it anyway?
Oh, that's that's clear, that's that's easy, that's easier to run a violation.
Okay.
You do not have permission to do disputes.
Okay.
Um, we are going to vote.
Okay.
Yes.
Great, I was wondering.
And and ditto on the tax enforcement, you have to pay this, and it is a embezzlement. If you hold money that belongs to us.
Okay.
That's 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 clear. The um, the housing stock data, the census adds pretty well with a with a margin of error. So I can tell you how many buildings are in town, what the homeownership rate is.
Yeah.
And then of the ones that are available for rent, subtract the Airbnb number, and that would tell you how many tenants there are.
That was.
I think. And that that number.
Yeah, there's some sort of.
They they have a margin of error, but it gets you, it gets you a pie chart.
Right.
Pretty, pretty close.
Right, and then, yeah, and then I think we can make a more deliberate of plan for what we want in Scottsville.
Um, take my my zoning cap off and my economic development cap on. Is it useful, like people are applying for these because they think they're gonna be, you know, profitable.
有利.
Um, and if we know from the other ones, like. Either they are or they aren't making as much money as if you just had a permanent tenant.
Yeah.
Like, that's information that I could give an applicant of like, well, we've got the entities in town. And they're not earning twelve thousand a year.
Right.
Are you sure you wanna do this?
Right, but I mean, I think that anyone who's going to go into business needs to do their own due diligence.
Yeah.
You know, like, you can make an argument, do we need another gas station, do we need another chicken place?
Sure.
This guy's putting a lot of money into his business, he's gonna do that research.
Yeah.
So if somebody.
Not really our role.
It is, it's, it's not, it's not really our role, yeah, I mean. You would assume that someone's only going to do it if it's profitable for that. You know, and the argument that we had from one of our applicants in the past was the only way this could be profitable for me. At the sales price that I'm committing to is if I turn it into.
We have to, we have to believe them when they say that.
Well, we have to believe them, but it doesn't mean that we have to approve the application.
True.
But, you know, and that's our decision, that's where we have to strike a balance, like, are we in favor of economic growth? Are we in favor of tourism, or are we in favor of housing? And what can we do to to meet those goals and establish those, establish that? Because we're trying to market Scottsville as a tourism town, but we're saying that you can't, you can't stay here, we're not gonna provide transient lodging.
Yeah.
What what are our bounds, what do we wanna do?
Right, and I am concerned that town council denied an application for one homeowner to turn. His property into an Airbnb, but because they really liked this fancy PowerPoint presentation and their business model. You know, they're gonna approve this one, but say no to this one, I don't think that's fair.
Well, and and in that case, that was as an example of a homeowner who has multiple units, but was only trying to turn one into an Airbnb. Whereas this would have wanted to turn all of them into Airbnb.
Yes.
So.
No, it was gonna put the work in to make it viable, which it is not.
Right, can we, can we resubmit that to town council, so you need to read.
Well, they have, they have a file holder on there.
Okay.
So so this is, this is.
I mean, I'm not saying that I want them to turn down Miss Freer's application, because they don't, like, we have, we have both of them for a reason.
I know, I know either.
Yeah.
But I don't think it's fair to say yes to her and no to this other person. Based on, you know, an argument that should hold true for her, you know, you know, to vote against her. And, you know.
Yeah, to to be clear on what the what the differences are, why is, why is value sheet better than value sheet, if it is.
Right, and and if if the argument was truly solely based on. Because you're taking away rental stock, long term rental stock from our market, then you have to say no to.
Yeah, the the switching station had a tenant in it when I moved here four years ago.
Right. Right. Yeah, and I don't want from the same order for the record, I just, I don't think the argument is fair.
Yeah.
Well, that's tough.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what do we, what's, what, what type of balance do we think is appropriate?
Well, yeah, and I think that's why we need to get the numbers to say to town council. If that's your argument, then this is how much long term rental stuff we have compared to, you know. Residential housing, um you know, homeownership. And then this is how much we assess. The, you know, transient lodging, you know, ratio should be to to strike a good balance, and we're not there yet. So, so denying people's activity.
If you, if you had a pie chart that you were trying to hold to, then you could look at that, and once you got past ten percent, you'd start denying things.
Exactly.
Sure.
Yeah, something more concrete than this, oh my, that tells me, I don't, you know.
Well, that that part could have been misconstrued, certainly, yeah. And and to what extent do we wanna plan for our economic growth, and to what extent do we wanna plan for our house?
Yeah, yeah.
And don't put company in the hand in a way, you know, yeah, one. So.
Yeah, that is different.
I mean.
Um, one, one way of parsing this as well is the, when are the units not actually lost? Um Admiral Tony and some others look at this too, they distinguish um a homestead. Where I have a big house and I rent it out in the basement, that, that's kind of the best of both. You're not evading someone, you still have, I'm taking my finished basement and I, instead of. I don't know, uh, my my kid's friends stay there, they may have sleepovers, instead I went about to. And help me pay my mortgage, so the, those are often looked on well as as being a best of both. What we tend to see, I think these are places that are not shared. Uh, and some visitors prefer, you know, to have the entire best of themselves. But that's one other little thing to parse.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm certainly guilty of this, I had a, my my friend had hosted a bachelor party at an Airbnb in the county, which was in the middle of a town hospital. And it was available for Airbnb, and we did our bachelor party, and I don't think the neighbors on either side liked it. Um, there we were. Um, did did this Airbnb operator end up like doing that every weekend, and was it more parties than what would happen if it were just a home? Is there really, so what I'm asking about is a nuisance, can you see a difference in impact where. And a tourist rental causes a problem that isn't caused by a home? Those are the kinds of things like, maybe you don't care about how business owner is using the property, but you do care about neighbor impacts like. Noise and traffic and parking and smells. Those you can never.
Well, to some extent, I mean, yeah, because it's special use permit, but.
Yeah.
But you can't always invite right.
Right.
By right development.
Exactly, exactly, so the kind of the one to come back to is if the, if you really didn't care and didn't wanna be voting on these issues at all, you just make it just right, and let it happen. Would be the most libertarian thing to do.
Well, then. The question has nothing to do with what you guys do debate. If you've got the numbers, you should be able to provide. To the board a percent of the occupancy, eighty percent full, seventy percent full, without the falls in any kind of numbers. And you certainly will be able to divulge to them how much income comes in a quarter. Is it providing our town money or not?
Yeah.
You should be able to provide that without, in a way, you know, the same information, and that should be pretty simple.
Especially.
What you guys are looking for.
Well, that's what, that's where I was about to go, I I mean, what what are the hard, I mean, what are what are the numbers? Because the revenue, when there's a tenant living in a home is what, zero? I mean, we we don't get tax income.
Right.
So if it's a business, because it's transient lodging.
Right.
What's the tax on that, what what percent? And what did that translate to in twenty twenty one?
Right.
And then.
Which is related to, or they paying more time, or or they're not paying.
Well, and and we can get into that too, there's ways, we talked about that, there's ways that we can try to get a better return on getting. You know, respond to um, find for the business licenses and pay their taxes and provide those reports.
Sure.
But when somebody is visiting from out of town. Are they spending more or less money in our stores and restaurants?
Yeah.
I mean, are they, are they eating at the Vatto and the Tavern more in Michi's, or are they, you know?
Yeah.
Are they shopping at the River Ben Boutique, what are they doing while they're here, are they spending money here?
Yeah.
And how valuable is that to us?
Uh-huh.
And again, this is, we want tourism in this town, we we market ourselves as a river town. And tourism, so what does that mean? Do we wanna let these folks live here, stay here, or do they have to be commuting from Charlotte?
Right. Yeah, I stayed at one of our Scottsville Airbnbs when I was visiting here to scout whether I wanted to apply for the job. And having an Airbnb, you know, be cute and have nice things that I could do when I looked around was persuasive.
So can you give us numbers for twenty twenty one or the last fiscal year?
Yeah, yeah, we can, we've got our total receipts that we know about. And we can divide that, like averaging together, divide that by the prices that are shown, and I can tell you how many nights that was. And that'll give you how full they are, without giving you details about any one person's business, yeah.
And and to piggyback on what you said earlier about who is living in these units, it's. Friends and family staying from out of town, it's um folks who work at um the Dominion Plant. Um traveling nurses, it's a little bit of a drive for them, but indeed, you know, this is nice for them, it's a community. Um so these are people that are working in the areas sometimes and. Um, so these are people that are working in the area sometimes and staying here longer than just one month.
I don't think I've gotten a single nuisance complaint about guests behaving badly.
Yeah.
Residents complain about other things, but not that.
Yeah, well, do we have kind of like a B uh Airbnb packet? Like if someone comes to town council, I mean, not council, but the office to say, you know, I wanna. I wanna start an Airbnb. What do I have to do?
I I pretty much got that down. I filled with that enough times. So here's the here's the summing, so you'll probably need the special use permit. And here's the transient tax forms and here's the business licenses. So um, thank you. This is a service that the community needs, because we care about tourism. Um, this paperwork will take a couple of months, but yes, you can get started.
Yeah, okay, great.
Get started with the paperwork, not get started with the views.
Yeah, no, I mean, you've got it down. I understand. I just was curious if there was like, you know. That was a policy or, you know.
The the new owner at um Chester came by uh a week or two ago for exactly that.
Oh, okay.
They they wanna restore just the cottage for this use. They wanna keep the main house as their main house.
Okay, sure.
But do this with two bedrooms in the cottage, so we walk through that.
And I'm sorry, can you recap for us how many units used to be at the Chester, High Meadows, Lumpens? So I can, we can have a historical perspective on what we have now versus what we had maybe five, ten years ago.
I think there's eight bedrooms in the big house in the guest cottage.
Is that Chesterfield?
Tanya has rented the guest cottage for some time now.
So si- six plus eight plus four, eighteen.
Plus, perhaps we even did have some transient, um, you know, individual units back then.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably a few in partnership, but. Okay, so eighteen, that's a big difference from where we're at right now, which is eight. Eight total, does that include Lumpens and?
Uh, it uh Lumpens has four units, so that's, that would be twelve.
So it's gonna be twaddled, yeah.
I didn't even know until we started talking about this, that that those units were rentable.
It's pretty it's pretty quiet there, yeah.
I mean, it it's not, when I look on Airbnb and VRBO or Homeway, like, you know, they're not on there, so I don't know how they advertise for those. How people would even find out about them if you're not familiar.
And I think it just looks very plain, that repeat customers, or they get breakfast there and they have a.
Right.
The company, the boss tells them the company. Yeah.
Yeah, so there's, I've. I don't even know if I would count those, like, I mean, they they count technically good. Outsiders are finding out about them.
Well, words, not something you imagine is what will happen.
I just don't like, I I, you know, to come back to the the town council vote to vote that one down. I I just feel like that is so arbitrary, and I don't want people to think like. You know, it's a popularity contest, or it, you know, it's based on some arbitrary. Decision about whether we're gonna do this or not. Like, if we're trying to encourage people to bring their business. You know, or to establish businesses in town, I don't want that that image of, you know. It's at the whim of whoever's voting that night to say yay or nay. Uh, I I want us to come up with some solid guidance on whether or not to approve these units. Um.
There has to be extenuating circumstances for that disparity.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I. I if I were that that owner, I would be very angry that my application got turned down.
Well, that and we had to push it off the calendar a few times and they were very accommodating. Perhaps if we didn't push it off the calendar, they got their application sooner.
Right.
And that doesn't feel good to me at all.
Yeah, it just seems, it feels very arbitrary. And yeah, I would I would be very angry if I were that homeowner. So.
So we as a body, what are we wanting to see? What is our appetite for this? What would be, you know, what are some points of consideration for us?
I I mean, I think we we need that ratio of what.
You think the numbers are meaningful?
Yeah.
It's forward. Yeah, because I just don't have any concept.
Because we need that context.
Yeah.
And and we can we can share that that with town council of, you know, here's your thinking on this.
Right.
And have that check against their judgment. But you can share the stat of like, okay, well, why did they make that decision?
Right.
And then if they agree with your logic, that should help your recommendations for the whole let go.
Right, I I think I think their votes should be based on on statistics and numbers and logic and not like. Hmm, I don't like this, I'm gonna vote no.
Is it possible that we, you know, do the research on this and come up with a pretty. Uh, clear strategic plan for moving forward? That we could ask people to re-apply, right?
Oh, sure. Uh, yeah, nothing stops you from reapplying in in uh six months or a year if you think the conditions have changed.
Yeah.
You can try again. I'll tell you what I think, right?
So aside from just, you know, well, we can we can talk about numbers and what numbers would be healthy for a community. Be nice to hear from other jurisdictions about their processes and how that's working for them. But we have a housing shortage here in our town, so. Then if we stick to numbers, that means we're gonna have the transient lodging shortage too.
Right.
Um, and you know, it's not a whole lot of appetite for development as we know. So aside from just coming up with raw numbers of how many you think. I don't want people to say, oh, I'm gonna get my application in. Maybe what other criteria would you want to see from? The applicants to make it a desirable application?
Right, is one is one size of unit better than another, or do they make more sense in a certain part of town than than another?
Well, and I liked your idea of um what Alamo says about accessory dwelling units and. That makes it a little bit more marketable. So if somebody has. A residential dwelling and they wanna build an accessory dwelling unit, do we have an appetite for that?
There there is a a great lawsuit about a treehouse.
I don't think those words.
That that was transient lodging.
What kind of what kind of structure is that and what what's the name is it and and is somebody allowed, like, within an HOA to just build a treehouse and everything?
Oh, wow.
I was I've seen several Washington Post stories about it.
The quirkiness of Airbnb is that you can.
Yeah, yeah, you can F up a treehouse somewhere.
Yeah.
I think there is one in Stiler or. Okay, yeah.
Winter, it's up near Wintergreen.
Okay.
Yeah, my friends just stay there.
Well, I have some friends that stay in the yurt nearby and personally. Um.
Yeah.
So I think her, like, I would be okay with. Allowing accessory dwelling units, especially on parcels that have a little bit more land.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean. Maybe I'll put a little tiny house in my backyard. How about that? Now, actually, I don't want that at all, but.
I think we, I think we need to come up with a plan and present it to town council and say. We want you to hear to this, like, we don't want this to be arbitrary anymore, because that makes our town look bad frankly.
I think it's important.
Bring it on.
Well, I think it's important that we look at what each other are doing, you know?
Yeah.
Um, checks and balances, man. No, no. Well, what, I mean, but what do we, let's like, let's lead the the way here.
Yeah.
Tell them what we want to see, what.
Exactly.
Do we have any other criteria other than numbers?
I mean, I'll I'll keep doing research and see if I can find out, you know, I I had sent a couple of articles about the frozen pond before. About Airbnbs and, you know, to how much is too much and what changes the feel of the community and. And that kind of thing. And I think it's, it's, we're gonna have to decide, because I don't think there's any hard fast number out there, like. If your town has five hundred residents, then only four percent should be, you know. Transitting lodging in order to not upset the balance of, you know, whatever. So I think that's just something we're gonna have to come up with. But I can try to do more research and present it at the time about.
I think the same the same kind of pinch exists in every community with a ski resort or a beach.
Right.
The same thing that brings the tourists also, those places need seasonal workers.
Right.
And there's not enough places to sleep at peak season for both groups.
Right.
And you end up either like blessing in your workers from far away or. Uh, losing tourists because they go to the other mountain that has better lodging.
Hmm.
Um, so yeah, plenty of case studies out there, but uh.
Do you have any um. Like communities that you're in touch with quite often as far as trying to. Look at the different challenges you've come across?
Charlottesville likes to compare itself to. College and Alamo City communities like Burlington, Vermont and Boulder, Colorado.
Okay, what are your.
Which have some of the same dynamics, and those places also have like small packs that are a little bit further away.
Yeah.
And yeah, they they deal with really tough housing issues. Because the the apartments get taken up by wealthy travelers or um students from wealthy families. And the local workforce gets pushed out farther away. And the issue that they're dealing with is like, okay, maybe we need to build like special apartment buildings for our workforce. Which are not like appealing to tourists.
Well, speaking of which, when I was living in Colorado, there were lots of those kinds of. Um, communities where they would, you know, endeavor to build a project of some sort or a ski resort or whatever. They would make these little box housing developments that really eventually would fall apart. But anyway.
Yeah, because for your, right, for the the waitresses and housekeepers, you need to listen.
Yeah, yeah. Well, um, the reason why I ask is because I would like to know what kind of. Things other localities do that are similar to Scottsville. I mean, we do have a tourist aspect. But we're not a ski resort, you know, like, it's not gonna be comparable that way, but. If you knew of any, I mean, would you be able to reach out and say, what do you, what's your formula? What do you do? What what are your thoughts about Airbnb?
Yeah, I I think I would do a a Virginia small-town with-serve question.
Uh-huh.
Um, where, like, huge kind of foresty places like a Gordonsville, gotta be in the same boat.
Yeah.
Um, at at, yeah, Lexington, Apennines, people come for the historic tourism, but that's not like the only thing to do in Apennines.
Well, if you have a list served.
Yeah.
Kind of like that, that would be a really neat question to ask them to kind of just, I mean, just to take it as. Yeah, you know, information and a place, ways to get started.
And you're and you're asking about a, like, a decision policy for.
Yeah, like, what are their thoughts about, what are excessive, I mean, acceptable numbers or, you know, that kind of thing. Or what restrictions, if any, have they imposed? Like, Alamo County does not allow short-term rentals. Unless it's the homestead situation.
Yes, they've been restricting on that. The the bachelor party thing that I did six years ago is illegal.
Uh-huh. Okay, thanks for blazes the trail. And and the city of Charlottesville doesn't have restrictions. You need a business license. I don't I don't even know. I don't know if you need a special use permit, but they don't have the same restriction that Alamo County has.
Right.
And here we need to go through the special use permit process, and it's a business license and tax, but. But I think we just just uh with the, um. The PUD, you know, we we look at other localities or models.
Mm-hmm.
As far as that's concerned, it might be worth finding out what they do.
Yeah, yeah. One thing I would doubt would be, you know, do they have hotels, right?
Yeah, yeah.
If you have a successful hotel industry and the hotel always pays its taxes on time, maybe you don't need these as much. Um, we're not like that.
Mm-hmm. Well, and where is the closest hotel? Charlottesville?
The street.
Zion Crossroads, I mean.
Yeah.
Dilwyn, that's it, right?
Right, Longwood.
It's it's just.
I, and you know, for what it's worth, I don't stay in hotels anymore. I hate them. I I, I mean, I guess if I had no other choice, but the hotel may have been somewhere.
Do you know I've never rented an Airbnb before? I'm gonna get out much.
I love it because you can get like, you know.
Character.
You do, you get character, and I wanna be in the town and I wanna go to the local coffee shop and I wanna walk to the library or whatever. I don't wanna stay in a hotel.
Right.
So, and I wanna be able to bring my dog if I want to bring my dog, so I don't know.
Do you take your dog when you travel?
Yep.
Cute as hell.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, so I love them. I mean, I, yeah, I I think they're great, but, you know, I think too many of them is a problem.
Yeah.
And I think we have as a community to define that before.
Yeah. Yeah.
Cool.
All right. Well, it's like, that's fun.
Awesome.
That was a robust conversation.
We just can't really get out of here in like forty-five minutes.
Uh, thank you so much for that sample report.
Nice.
Um, new business?
No, this is not.
Really?
I feel we have enough old business.
I know, we should do, we should do, okay. Um, any other, anything else before we wrap up? Uh-oh, okay, column meeting to end at nine oh nine, yeah. I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, I guess that's important.
To adjourn, I'll just always make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'm happy to start with that.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Bye. All right, thank you so much.